I'd like to convene the meeting of the city council for any second, and I'd like you to stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the roll.
Belzak.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Kenny. Shower. Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Five present and two absent.
We have a quorum. It takes us to item five, questions and comments and announcements of a general nature. This is inserted in our agenda for anyone in the audience who may not be able to wait till the end of the meeting to make a comment. This could be regarding anything. It doesn't have to be an agenda-related item. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share with the council tonight? Please come forward and state your name. You may want to lower that microphone a little bit, too.
Yeah, I'm a shrimp. Good evening. Mary O'Dowd, Darien citizen. There has been some controversy lately over Darien's new contract with LRS for refuse recycling and yard waste. Some residents have voiced strong opinions against the change in providers. I am not one of those residents. I love the new service from LRS. Our household does not generate that much landfill trash, so the small tote is perfect for us, and we get the senior discount, which is a huge savings from what we paid before. Both the landfill tote and the recycling tote have nice sturdy wheels, which makes taking the bins to the curb a heck of a lot easier, especially during a Chicago winter. Best of all, my husband and I don't have to deal with these. Having lived in Darien for over 20 years, we always tried to plan ahead for garbage night, but sometimes those bags of yard waste just got the better of us. So we'd both look at each other on those late Sunday nights, and we'd play the game of, all right, whose turn is it to drive to the Jewel and buy more garbage stickers? So thanks to the program with LRS, we no longer need to do that. Now, given the myriad crises facing our world today, this small improvement may seem trivial, but we appreciate it. So, thank you, City of Darien, and thank you, LRS, for saving us money, for making our lives a bit easier, and for promoting our domestic tranquility. Darien truly is a nice place to live.
And Mary? Mary? Thank you very much for coming in and sharing that with us. We love hearing stories like that.
It makes a difference.
We only get the negative ones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to the approval of our minutes for April 18th, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve? Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments regarding those minutes? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The minutes have been approved. It takes us to receiving of communications. And do any of the Aldermen have communications they'd like to share with the council? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. I did receive an email communication last week after the, I believe it was the 23rd of April, shooting incident on Interstate 55. Some residents, much of my ward borders Frontage Road, which is right along I-55. So the Mueller family was woken up. They could hear the gunshots. They even recorded it on their Ring doorbell. So they just expressed their concern. Obviously, this happened on the interstate, not in Darien. Let me stress that. But just the concern, you know, that obviously crime seems to have peaked all over, you know, Illinois and nationwide, but, you know, with the expressway being so close, just emphasizing, you know, the need, and I know the mayor and state administrator Vanna were once again pitching the sound wall idea to our state legislators when they were down in Springfield. But, you know, it's just very critical to Darien and, obviously, my area if that could, you know, really come to fruition.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? I received a beautiful card today from Downers Grove South. Last week I was, actually, two weeks ago, I was invited to attend two governments, government classes, and as I have in the past, as part of a panel discussion, some of the most intelligent questions come from juniors in high school who are taking government. And I appreciate the opportunity to go into the school and do that, and the card they sent today was lovely, and it was, it was nice to hear them say thank you. Anyone else? Okay. That takes us to the mayor's report, and there is no mayor's report tonight. Takes us to the city clerk's report.
No report this evening.
And the city administrator's report?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. I thought he was running away. It takes us to the department head information and questions. We have a presentation tonight by Chief Thomas, so I'm going to ask, are there any questions for Mr. Gombeck first?
I just have one quick one.
Go ahead.
What is the status now of the license plate readers? I know you said there might be some movement in installing those, or?
Yes, we're moving forward. We have a meeting tomorrow, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Yeah, just with what Mary said, with the shooting on the Stevenson, nice to be have those cameras to be able to monitor the people coming in and out of Darien.
Okay. Obviously, no questions for Mr. Gombeck. So Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you. About a year ago, in fact, it was a year ago, April, we were here, and we talked about a number of officers that had started on the police department, and talked about some awards that were received, and so we're back at it again this year. Might have went a little fast, but on December 26th of 2021, Darien officers assisted Chicago with a chase that involved a car that allegedly had was carjacked at gunpoint. We assisted in the apprehension of the perpetrators using stopsticks to flatten the tires. After the stopsticks were deployed, we chased the subjects on foot with the aid of the helicopter and made arrests of the three subjects in that offense. So officers who were very busy in 2021 made some very good arrests. So, moving on, we hired two CSOs, community service officers. The first one was Dave, excuse me, Wiggins, who was hired on, well, that wasn't interesting. Dave Wiggins, who was hired on May 4th of 2021. Dave had a very full career in the Chicago Fire Department as a paramedic, 25 years, and you can imagine the stories he has available to talk about. We're very fortunate to hire Dave, and in the process of hiring Dave, and the next person we'll talk about is Jade, in hiring those, we were able to change our hours for the CSOs. So we have 12 hours coverage with overlap of the CSOs working shifts Monday through Friday. So it's worked out very well. Next is Jade Nedvich, also a community service operator. She was hired on August 18th of 2021. She had graduated high school, and she reached out to me, which I was appreciative of. We have another person that just reached out to me, and we're going to try to work out on an internship. In fact, that's what Jade had called me about, was an internship. But as luck would have it, we had a CSO that had just left that took a job with the Chicago Police Department, so I was able to offer her the CSO position. She still had to go through all the application and selection process, but she was the individual that was eventually hired. Jade's working afternoon shift and attends College of the Page, working to attain her associate's degree in criminal justice. Those two, along with veteran CSO Bill Whitesides, who's been with us for 15-plus years, we've got some very good CSOs doing some very good coverage for us. Next is Chris Oblowski. Chris is sick today, so he's not being able to join us. To lawfully perform the duties of an officer, officers have to swear an oath of office in order to begin their training. So instead of a swearing-in ceremony, we're opting for a pinning ceremony. Personnel selected someone close to them for the honor of pinning on the badge. Officer Chris Oblowski, Oblowski, is not feeling well, as I said, so he's not able to join us today, but I'd like to introduce him anyway. Officer Oblowski's badge number is 324, was hired on January 18th, 2021, sworn in the same day by John Callan, a member of the Fire and Police Commission. Chris, he had family members present for the swearing-in ceremony. A little bit about Chris, he graduated from Willowbrook High School in 2014. He's been a member of the Illinois National Guard since 2016, received his law enforcement certificate in May of 2021. His father and brother are both in law enforcement, and Chris is assigned to day shift patrol, Squad A, under the leadership of Sergeant Mike Lorick. And next, we have Chris Dugopolski. Chris is here, along with, right? Come on up. Next, I'd like to introduce you to Officer Chris Dugopolski, badge number 328, and he's going to have that badge pinned up. Go ahead, do the honors. See how fast he's going to do this, see if I can read faster. Officer Dugopolski was hired on November 15th, 2021. Officer Dugopolski was hired on November 15th, 2021, and sworn in the same day by John Armelino of the FPC. Chris earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in criminal justice from Lewis University with a minor in psychology in 2014. Really, really smart people attend Lewis University.
He's got his master's.
Chris received his law enforcement certificate in August of 2019. He had previously worked as a police officer with the Park Forest Police Department, then Glendale Heights Police Department, gaining a total of two and a half years of police experience before making the right decision and coming here to Darien Police Department. Chris has been assigned to the second shift patrol, Squad B, under the leadership of Sergeant Kociniak. And you've got to give those up.
I'm done with them. Leave your meat. All right.
Can I face forward? We get a picture?
That's Chris.
Chief, can I, Chief, can I get you in there, too?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Resident photographer.
I'll do it here. Oh, can I get one? I'm sorry. Nick Square's getting all the good photos here.
You can't get back up. He needs something to do.
Next, the person who we recognize is Bill Greenberg. However, due to a prior commitment, Bill was unable to join us tonight. Sergeant Greenberg had badge 320. He was hired on January 11th of 1996, promoted 16 years later to sergeant on July 29th, 2013, assigned to patrol, the backbone of the police department. For the time, he was an officer and as a sergeant. Most recent assignment before retiring was second shift, Squad B. Bill, having the highest seniority, could have taken any day shift assignment, but he knew he was retiring, and instead of taking an assignment that was due him, he opted to take a less than desirable assignment. Some of the night shift guys would disagree about desirable assignments on night shift. So that there was no resuffling of shifts, no repicking of shifts and days off when he left and new sergeant promoted. It's the little things that demonstrate some strong leadership. Bill earned a life-saving award in 2013, the Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists in 2012, 2007, 2005, and 2004. Bill received commendations in 2021, 2010, 2007, and 2004. So although he's not here, let's give him a little round of applause. Awesome. Next is Sergeant Jeff Kociniak. Jeff's here. I thought I saw him. There he is. Sergeant Jeff, Jeff's family is not able to make it. Jeff was promoted to sergeant on January 22nd, 2022, replacing Bill Greenberg, who had retired. Jeff had 23 years' experience as a patrol officer. Jeff is assigned to lead Squad B on the second shift. You're working tonight, Jeff?
I am.
Awesome. With the patrol division. Jeff attended College of the Page, where he earned an associate's degree in criminal justice in 1994, continuing his education at Lewis University. See a theme here? Just saying. Where he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice in 1997. Actually, I think mine was 1996. He had glasses, got it never do it. In addition to his patrol duties, Jeff was a juvenile officer, defensive tactics instructor, evidence technician, and a field training officer. So newest sergeant in the Darien Police Department. Throughout the year of 2021, we received 33 letters of appreciation for our employees. 25 of them were from citizens and eight from another agency, other police agency. I'll read you a couple of examples of what we're talking about. One came from a resident of 7800 block of Darien Lake Drive, called the police, wanted to express gratitude for Darien officers. She said she feels very safe living in town, wanted all of us to be recognized for the job that we are doing. In another letter, a woman said, "Thank you for your officer helping a man and his son in a Jewel parking lot. The car was practically against the driver's door of a Ford SUV and the only way, the only way into the car. Several attempts to locate the driver of the closely parked car was made, but could find no response. Your officer responded, helped the man and his son. Your officer is wonderful. I thought you should know. Thank you." Actually, that officer is Luke Smoji. Just found that out. What'd you do? Tow that thing out there?
The guy came out, or the woman came out.
All right. When you come make something up. Management issued 11 commendations for conduct above and beyond normal police duties. On December 22nd, 9:25 PM, officers heard radio transmission that Willowbrook officers were attempting to stop a stolen motor vehicle. The driver was actively trying to elude police by speeding and driving into oncoming traffic lanes. Officers did not pursue. Smartly, Officer Ruby saw the vehicle at Plainfield and 75th, knowing the likelihood that the vehicle would flee if he activated his lights, he opted to follow the vehicle, giving out the vehicle's location. Officer Conno positioned himself along 75th Street, was able to deploy stopsticks in front of the vehicle, flattening out the front passenger side tire. Officer Ruby continued to call out the vehicle's location. Defending driver turned into a subdivision with only one way out. Realizing it was too late, the three offenders in the stolen car fled. Officer Ruby quickly located one of the offenders when the offender hid in the backyard. Officer Conno found another of the offenders, and Downers Grove officer located the third. So those are types of things that you'll see. In fact, Tony's here today. Intoxicated drivers cause a great deal of harm, so attempts are made to reduce the number of intoxicated drivers. Officers Drella, Smoji, Noga, and Ruby received recognition from the Alliance Against Intoxicated Motors. Those four officers are here. They've already received their certificate from them. Next, Officer Cottro. Officer Cottro responded to the 7900 block of Hedgewood Drive, referenced a subject who was having a seizure and was not breathing. Officer Cottro quickly arrived on the scene, and upon his assessment of the victim, was unable to locate a pulse. He moved the patient from between a wall and a bed so he could begin CPR. Darien Woodridge Fire Department arrived and transported the victim to Good Sam's Hospital. The victim was in a coma for four days. Had a 99% blockage on his left ventricle, but thankfully suffered no brain damage. According to the patient's doctors, without Mate's quick life-saving efforts, the patient would not have survived the medical emergency. So please join me in acknowledging Officer Cottro. He's already got his life-saving award, and we wear it on our uniforms. Very nice. Last year, I was able to talk about Canine Nico, who has badge number 393, how he served the city honorably for eight years in the patrol division, and then retired on April 20th, 2021. Unfortunately, I have to report that Nico passed away in January. Our condolences to Tony and Tony's family, having just lost our dog on April 22nd, is a very sad occasion. So, very sad, but those things happen. So next, I'd like to turn to the annual report. You guys are all done. Appreciate everybody's good job, Nick. Officers in support personnel continue to work hard and keep crime down. Many people like to know about crime clearances and arrest rates and the like. I, however, thought it, think it's much more important to make, than making arrests, clear cases, and return stolen property, it being best that you're never a victim in the first place. Officers' preventative actions, arresting offenders, et cetera, has contributed to keeping crime down, and you can see that by that pattern, crime has gone down quite a bit, leveled off, and back down again this year. That's good things. In a previous city council meeting, I was asked about crime clearance rates. To date, in 2022, there have been 3,971 calls for service. Calls for service are not crime. You heard just about one call for service where the vehicle was parked and parked too close, couldn't get it parked. So there's a big difference between calls for service, don't equate those to offenses. There was 392 offenses, so only about 10% of calls for service are any type of criminal activity. And even when I talk about criminal activity, we're not talking about the eight Part One crimes, where major crimes, we're talking about Part Two crimes and ordinance violations as well. So all that 292, one was unfounded, and what founded means is that the offense never occurred. Of those remaining, 150 were cleared by an adult arrest, or about 38% were cleared by adult arrest. Six were cleared by juvenile arrest, or about 1.5. That's a very interesting statistic, actually. So I looked last year and this year, and I'm working to try to figure out if this is an anomaly or a problem with our software. But we used to arrest in the 70s and 80s juveniles a year. Last year was seven, year before was five, and so far this year is six. So overnight, I'm hoping that's a good trend. We have to just check, make sure it's a trend and not anomaly with our software.
I just asked a quick question. Do the, do the response calls for retail theft get classified as a crime call?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we can blame some of this on my friends, won't we?
Yeah, there's, and then about 43% of cases are cleared. 2,000, or 207 cases were about 52%, 53% were closed, which means there's not enough information to go forward with any kind of investigation. There's no witness statements, no physical evidence, all those different types of things to try to solve those cases. There's about 50% or 50 pending cases, which makes up another 13%, and 33 cases that were noncriminal offense, or noncriminal reports. So that's where those, those numbers come from. Little bit about, I think a very big misnomer is what you see on TV is not what happens in real life. You'll see sometimes they put the DNA in a system, and within the hour, they know who it is. It doesn't work that way. Actually, when you put that in the system, that person has to have had a prior felony arrest, had had to have his DNA taken in order to have any kind of hit on that piece of DNA that was located. DNA in Illinois used to be about two years behind, so, but I think they've improved that significantly. Fingerprints used to be eight or nine months behind, and I think they've also improved that tremendously as well. So when you see TV and it shows up that Dan Gombeck was a perpetrator in this situation... Thanks, Greg. Doesn't happen that way. Actually, what happens is they, they come up and they're in ranked order, and it's 99.8% hit, it's a 97.6, and then you still have to do all this work. So obviously, DNA is a tremendous tool, but it's only that is a tool. So when you see all those different types of things, it's not real. So most cases are cleared by patrol because they have the ability to make those arrests and then not investigating afterwards after the fact. Give you an example of some of that work between patrol and detective. Give you an example that occurred at the dry dock. It was burglarized twice. Patrol, the second time, patrol caught the offenders. I think there was three, no, there's two involved. Detectives then took all that information that, from that arrest, and linked those offenders back to multiple burglaries throughout Illinois, Indiana, and Wisconsin. So there's a big difference between those two and what you see on TV, well, what detectives do, what patrol does, and all those different types of things. Don't believe in any of it. Brian, I think last year, he asked me about follow-up on arrests and convictions and, or not guilty's. Those matters are handled by the court, and we really don't get that information coming back to us. We just have to go in and log in and search those, and those are just time-intensive, and it really doesn't help out and solve those crimes. Roadway crashes, next up. Measure our driving safety by the frequency of accidents. We had more accidents in 2021 than we had in 2020. I'm sure that without analysis and some deeper thought, 2020 is a little bit of an anomaly, as you know about the COVID. You can see from 2015 through 2019, we're fairly constant with an average of 409 crashes per year. Discounting that 2020 for a moment, 2021 shows a 19.2% reduction over all those previous years. Officers increased moving violations... Officers increased moving violation enforcement by 27%, or 1,118 more drivers stopped and ticketed for moving violations in 2021 than in 2020. The public, obviously, can help themselves out very well, just like locking your car that we talk about frequently. They can also drive with due care and slow down, not drive aggressive. That voluntary compliance with the traffic laws is going to beat out our enforcement of traffic laws every time. So, that's my public service request, that people drive according to the law. We continue to have a great partner in DuCom, the agency that handles our 911 calls, and they also dispatch for fire and EMS. Chart depicts the frequency of calls for service by time of day just for us, and that has stayed fairly constant over the past 10 years. Because of this, we assign our manpower based on need and patrol. So, the movement to permanent shifts has helped us meet this model, put the officers' manpower matching the call load. It was a good move for us. I think it came out in the paper today. We do not shy away from discipline, and discipline's been in the news a lot, as well as use of force, so I threw this in. They have a conversation about that as well. Officers perform admirably, so it's really easy to take care of discipline at the Darien Police Department. But there are occasions where we need to step in, and it's shown very infrequently, but when needed, we do respond appropriately. At times, it requires use of force, and again, our officers react within the law and a good common practice. We hire the best, we continually train them, and we monitor all the behaviors through periodic reviews of video. There's also self-reporting. All the use of force incidents have all been self-reported. So it's great to have that outstanding esprit de corps. Officers doing what they're supposed to do, and those type of things. And you saw that, I think there was only eight citizens complaints out of like 10,000-plus calls for service, including a number of arrests and a number of other things. So none of those were substantiated. The cases where the civilian brought forth a complaint, supervisor bringing forth complaint for various reasons, a number of them were driving-related, either an accident or a pursuit or emergency driving that was poorly done, so those were taken care of. Use of force, there was 13 cases where offender used just personal weapons, hands, feet, spit, whatever, against our officers, and one time the knife was used. Officer displayed a taser in one situation, then targeted with a gun, but then fired a gun. One OC spray usage, and the rest of the time, personal weapons were used to combat that level of force. So, that's all I have, unless you have any... I'm sure you've taken an opportunity to look at it, and if not, it is in the packet.
Can you give me one favor? Can you go back to that crime graph?
Sure.
Is that possible, just for a quick second?
Yeah, absolutely.
With the music, though.
Yeah. Because I think it would be real interesting to see these crime numbers without the retail theft in there. Because I would venture to guess, the stuff, especially in the later years here, there's a lot of pressure on additional retail theft with the growth of the self-checkouts. Okay? Because I think that's what we're getting of the majority of the retail theft is coming from the self-checkout machines. And I think with the growth of those, it's put pressure on the crime, because if people see, you know, and Darien residents see the amount of crime, they think that might be a lot of crime, but if they understand a lot of that is retail theft, it changes the complexion of it in my mind.
I'll check.
I'm, on the face of it, I don't believe that that's accurate.
Okay.
There's not that many retail thefts that occur, and I'm fairly confident that they have not gone up either.
Well, because I've seen the weekly report. Every week, there's two or three, sometimes five.
Sure.
In there.
Yep.
And stuff.
And it's just a matter of sending out that report.
And then most of them are all with under scanning.
Oh, for sure. That is where the crimes are occurring, or retail thefts is with under-rings or non-ringing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Tom?
Thank you. Quick question. You mentioned earlier about the DNA database to be in there. It's a felony arrest, but doesn't mean a felony conviction. So you could arrest someone for whatever, and their DNA is in the database, but doesn't necessarily mean they've ever been convicted of something, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if someone does a felony, is automatically their DNA gets pulled, or it depends on crime?
Felonies.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And some people work in, close to people that deal with wrongful convictions. I went to, I can't remember, International Courts of something to talk about wrongful convictions. In Illinois, you'll see a lot, in Illinois, and I think Texas, have a lot of reversals. But because Illinois takes DNA and does a better job of storing DNA, and same thing with Texas, they have the ability to look at cases that have occurred a while ago and run DNA because that wasn't available in the 80s, 90s, or whatever. So, it's nice to see that DNA also clears a lot of people as well.
Anything else for the chief? Chief Thomas, thank you very much for the presentation.
Absolutely.
And all your hard work.[1152.75][1152.75](applause).
Nervous?
All right.[1155.75][1155.75](laughter) That takes us to our treasures report. Treasure Corin.
Thank you, Mayor. Safety and I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 212225 in the amount of $262,131.94 from the listed funds.
Motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Warrant's been approved. The next one, Mike?
Happy New Year. The first warrant of our current fiscal year, which began yesterday, May 1st, requesting council's approval of warrant number 222301 in the amount of $34,892.62 from listed funds and payroll for the period ended April 21st, 2022, the amount of $261,954.71 for a total be approved of $296,847.33.
Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Again, questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
And that warrant's been approved. And Mike, I think you have one other thing you wanted to mention?
Well, yeah, it's also sort of the next topic, standing committee reports. We are having the Police Pension Fund quarterly meeting to review the fund performance for the period ended Jan, well, starting January 1st through March 31st. It's this Thursday at 6:00 PM. It's historically been at 7:00 PM, so it's been changed to 6:00 PM. I think the city calendar shows it at 7:00. I've told the clerk about that, so it's going to be corrected, but it's at 6:00 PM if anyone intends on coming Thursday night across the street in the police training room.
Michael, I was at a meeting last week for DuPage Mayor's and Managers, and Phil Sees, who is on the fire board for downstate, indicated that a lot of the police money is now being put downstate. And I had indicated to him that we had asked for an extension to June, and he said Wheaton did the same thing, because he's the mayor of Wheaton. Have we put anything, are we going to wait till June, Mike, until that happens?
Well, quite, based on the representation from our attorney at the meeting, it was just really sprung on us, like a couple weeks before our prior meeting after December 31st, which would have been done early February, that they expected us to turn over our money within the three-week period of time. There is a current court case pending in Kane County, and I don't know the results of that yet. Hopefully, our attorney can advise us on that on Thursday night, challenging the consolidation of the funds. So hopefully, that's been resolved. But yes, we did request an extension, and a lot of other municipalities did. The timeframe was it had to be done by June 30th. We requested an extension until June 1st. So it is indicated on the agenda, we will be acting on that this Thursday night as well. But again, we're, I'm sure we're going to have some discussion with the attorney to see what the status of it is, but theoretically, the longest we could go would be June 30th, barring the courts overturning the consolidation completely.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else standing committee report? Brian?
Yes, Alderman Kenny asked me to remind everybody, the next police committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 16th, in the Police Department Training Room at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next Municipal Services Committee meeting is Monday, May 23 at 6:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan?
The Admin Finance Committee met tonight, and we discussed the updating, upgrading of the sound system here, and it'll be on the agenda in two weeks for City Council. The next Admin Finance Committee meeting will be on Monday, June 6th at 6:00 PM, and the Economic Development Committee will meet this Thursday, May 5th at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Takes us to questions and comments, agenda related. Does anyone have anything from the audience on our agenda? I don't think Mary has anything she wants to.[1428.23][1428.23](laughter) Takes us to old business. There being none, we move to the consent agenda. There is no consent agenda, so now we move to new business. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve the Annual Fourth of July Parade on Monday, July 4th, 2022, beginning at 9:30 AM, sponsored by the Darien Lions Club. And you can see the streets that will be closed for that parade. Item B, motion to approve. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any discussion? If none, the roll.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Item A has been approved. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter III of the Darien City Code, Water Meters and Billing Regulations by amending subsection VII, Non-Payment of Bills. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The item has been approved. Takes us to questions, comments, and announcements, again, of a general nature. I just wanted to mention that along with Alderman Sullivan, I attended Arbor Day on Friday at the community center. Was quite a crowd out there. We planted four trees in memory of individuals that have been lost, and one of them was for Kathy Minardi, who we can call our Arbor Day Lady, and it was very well-attended. And I know that her son is part of this, but my wife even made the comment that the madrigal singers actually sang a beautiful song that day that was very fitting. And Alderman Gustafson was there as well, I'm sorry, Er. And it really was a nice ceremony, it was very touching to see. I wish Kathy was still with us, but we planted a tree in her memory. Anything else? Mary?
Yeah, I just want to echo Mayor's comments, and also just, you know, kudos to the Arbor Day Committee. It's a small group, and they work really hard coordinating all the groups in attendance, from the schoolchildren, to growing the butterflies, to the madrigal singers, to the trees, to, you know, Morton Arboretum presenting. The Darien Police were there, doing a stranger danger talk. The Darien Woodbridge Fire guys were there, and they were all into their thing, and then they got called out on a call. And I said, well, is it better to be that, or you see them sometimes running out of the grocery store? I always feel bad, they got their cart of groceries, and they have to leave. But, no, I thought, you know, Mother Nature cooperated, because the rest of the weekend got a little dicey, but just well-done Arbor Day Committee, and Kathy's shining bright, who, you know, was instrumental in it starting in our community, and now there's a tree in her honor. I have other things, but that's all on Arbor Day.
Okay.
Okay. Just the next community action group for the City of Darien and all the nonprofit organizations is coming up on May 14th at the library from 10 to 12. We're thrilled with the launching of the new community calendar that went live last week, and more events are being added. There's been a change to the homepage for the city, a little bit more easier to navigate. Things pop out at you a little faster in terms of the calendar, community events. The city events are still on there as well, but if you haven't had an opportunity to take a look at the new website homepage and the community calendar, I urge you to do so, and it's only going to be updated more and more with more events, and hoping to add within the week a recorded mayor's message on there, and also some other videos. So, it's going to be changing more frequently, so be sure to, you know, check it out each week. Also, Cass 63, which is not to be confused with Center Cass, but Cass 63 is Concord and Cass Junior High. They will be going out for referendum on June 28th. I urge residents to attend. You should have received a mailer last week, but there are some upcoming information meetings on May 25th at 6:30 at Cass Junior High. And prior to that, on May 23rd, there will be a virtual Zoom. You can get this information by looking at the mailer that you received or visiting the cassd63.org website to get more information about the upcoming June 28th referendum on Cass District 63.
Thank you, Mary. Eric?
Yeah, and Center Cass District 66, they also have a referendum that's on June 28th. So I want to encourage people, make sure you register to vote, and make sure you get out there and vote. And remember, you can do that by mail if you go out on the DuPage County site. But to calculate the potential increase to your home, you can take, and you probably got the tax bill today, if you're like me, take the District 66 tax amount plus the associated pension that's reflected in there, take 25% of that, and that will be your increase. And for me personally, that's $800 a year. So it is substantial, so you need to get involved and make sure you're, get your vote accounted for.
Anything else? If not, motion to adjourn. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.